Okay, welcome everyone to this joint meeting of the City of Tyler Council and also the Smith County Commissioners Court. We appreciate you being here today. I'm going to call the Smith County portion to order and declare quorum is present and also declare legal notices have been posted and the court is duly called.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 20th, 2023 City Council meeting, joint meeting, and I will call this meeting to order, and we do have a quorum present. And we're going to start off with the invocation with Councilman McGee, followed by the pledge of Judge Franklin.
May we bow. How most gracious in having the following. First of all, I thank you for the community that I was. You see, we thank you for life, help, and strength, and thank you for these two grown-up bodies that have dedicated today to make decisions as an official for our city and for our county. We pray for our first responders and those who put their lives on the line every day to make sure we don't take any risks. God, we give you all the honor, all the glory, and all the praise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one to save, under God, one indivisible.
All right. Thank you very much and welcome again. This is a unique thing for us to meet together. It was done a few years ago, so this is not the first time, but it's the first time in a long time. And so it's great to get back together. I want to start things just by saying that this is a wonderful time to live and to work and to reside in Tyler and Smith County. We have so many special things going right now. We have the new WT Brookshires Conference Center. It's something that, anytime you start mentioning wonderful things, you always leave somebody out, so I'm sorry ahead of time. But we have the new UT Health Medical School. We have the new industrial park going on. But really near and dear to my heart and to, I believe, this entire group here is our downtown. We are fortunate enough to live in a community that they showed faith in us and voted yes on a bond to build a courthouse and a parking facility. That's, that was really exciting news to us. Now all the work has begun. And part of that is the square. And in that square area, a lot of people don't understand exactly how the intricate details of that, but essentially the county owns the land. Some may know that, some may not. But the city has the streets and the right of way. So it brings this situation up that we will collaborate and work together to give the public something really, really special, I believe. And you'll see that today. So I'm really excited about that. We will talk about the things that we have to work on and decide a little later. It will be ongoing. So this doesn't, we don't decide everything today, but you're going to see a video that's really special here in a few minutes. So I'll turn it over to Mayor Warren.
Well, good morning, everyone, and it is an honor to be here. You know, this relationship with the county, the last time we met was in 2000.
Was in 2018. And so it's been a while. And so it's good to come back together and work on this project. It is all about relationships. And I thank Judge Franklin and Commissioners Court for, you know, agreeing to come together and talk about this downtown plan. And I've been on the council since 2014. And anyone that knows me knows of my love for downtown. Born and raised here in Tyler, I've seen it thrive, I've seen it die, I see it coming back. And it's something that means a lot to me. And we've worked with a great group of people over the years to bring it to where we are today. In 2021, we hired Tool Design to do a preliminary assessment on downtown. And part of their process was engaging with the community and talking with stakeholders around the square and around the city. And they came up with a concept. And so we got together with the interested parties and we thought, do we want to go forward with what they're proposing or not? And what they proposed was just enough to let us know that we need to go a step further. So in January of 2022, we asked them to do a more in-depth study, which they did. And it really started coming to life. But not enough. And so what you have is you had these drawings and these maps that had some stick figures for people, and it was hard to visualize and dream, what is this all about? And so that's when we decided it's time to hire Fitzpatrick Half in EMA Engineering to go in and do a more in-depth analysis of the whole project and bring it to life. We also hired Kimberly Horn, or the Tyler MBO hired Kimberly Horn to do a traffic assessment of downtown. And what will occur if you take some streets from four lanes to two lanes, where will the traffic go? Will the other streets be able to handle the traffic if Broadway goes to two lanes? And so there, we got their analysis, and that's all been part of this project. So I think with what you're going to see in this video here in a minute, you're going to see it come to life. And when the judge mentioned the WT Brookshire Conference Center, we started with a master plan for that project, which was just that. It was a big poster board with a whole rose complex. It had no heartbeat. It had no life. But once it was put into a video form, and with music, no less, it really did come to life. And so with what you're going to see today, I hope is something that you can see the downtown plan coming to life. So, Judge?
All right. This is the part of our meeting that we normally have public comment. Today I did not receive any public participation forum, so we will just move on to what we consider in the county, our agenda item number one, which is request that the Tyler City Council and Smith County Commissioners Court jointly receive a presentation from Fitzpatrick Architects on a final design for public spaces in downtown Tyler, Texas. And as we get these coming down, I will introduce Brandy Ziegler with Fitzpatrick, if you'll come up to the microphone. Thank you.
Good morning, council and commissioners. And we're in a, you know, unprecedented meeting, and I'm so excited to be here. We have truly, we've worked on this project with you all. We've really been working on this project for the last decade. And this video represents many, many collaborative efforts and input and back and forth feedback from most of you in the room, a good bit of you. And what you're going to see today, we're going to start and focus on the downtown square area. I'm going to try to give us a little bit of a preview, so I don't have to talk too much over the video, because there is music, Mayor. And we want to just kind of let that sink in, but we're going to start with an overhead view of downtown, the proposed design. We'll kind of fly around and look at the design of the park overhead, the green space. We're going to see the new courthouse in the background. We'll see proposed new developments. You know, if you know much about our videos, sometimes we'll, we'll take a liberty here and there because of some new developments that may be an option for us as the downtown square develops. And that has been part of the reason we have looked at this so closely with, with the city and the county, is doing a project like this downtown. We've looked at precedent and research all over the nation. Most of our competitor cities in Texas are, our size, are doing projects like this. And what happens is the economic development starts, the heartbeat begins, and many times property values and the value overall begins to increase, and we start seeing kind of the life and the heartbeat happen downtown. So with that, we're going to wait and see if we can get this video screen in the middle showing and the TVs going here. Our music's not playing, though. Let's see. So I will talk instead of music. We can come back and play the music later. But overall, as you see here, we are looking at the downtown square. We're showing the, what the mayor mentioned, Kim Lee Horn's design and what council's looked at for the roundabouts and the two-lane traffic of Broadway here in the center. The idea is that this green space in the center of Tyler is connected both the west side and the east side. Us on the west side here has a little more of kind of a park element, shade element. And then as we move to the east side where the courthouse is planned, the park becomes a little more formal and a little more civic in nature. Right now, we're just flying around the courthouse proper, but here we are on Fannin with improvements on Fannin, headed to the new parking structure, the new 550-car parking structure here at Fannin and Ferguson. That's where the main entrance would be. We have monument areas and monument gardens planned for the east and west side of the courthouse. And here we are back on the east side in front of the courthouse, looking back at Peoples Petroleum Plaza Tower. There's a strong just connection between the two sides where it feels like one area, where festivals, if needed, on the weekend, just like we do now, we can close Broadway and the entire park feel like one contiguous green space. These shade structures are important so people can sit and eat and enjoy the shade, along with the tree-lined perimeter where you could walk in shade. One question and one thing you may be noticing, this area here is planned for some restrooms and storage here at the northwest corner. It's designed in a way that it is part of the park instead of a building just plopped down in the middle, and designed integrated into the park area. And you can see kind of an amphitheater fold up there that is over that restroom storage area. You just saw kind of a food truck concentration there on the northeast corner of that piece. I think you will notice that when you're all, when you're in the area, it's about a three-acre area here in the middle of town, but it feels, it doesn't feel that big. We're working to connect, you know, if I want to go from the northeast side where the parking structure is, I can be connected all the way down to Andy's quickly and have paths and connections all the way across. We really incorporated the tool concepts into, into the design. We've added 20 feet all the way around all the businesses, so the sidewalks have more area for outdoor eating, for congregating, for pedestrian safety. And we make that pedestrian crossing from those sidewalk areas to the center a much more safe area. And at night, there'll be sight lighting planned where we have uniform lighting and a completely different feel downtown in the park environment. I would love eventually to play this again without me talking and you get to just enjoy it with the music. So maybe we'll get that figured out here in a minute. We're, that was the video. I wonder if Hector, if you might be able to pull up the video and play it from your computer now that we're connected, would that be okay with you, Casey? And I'll be quiet. Okay. So Judge and Mayor, we have the live, what we call the live model. It's, the best thing I can describe is like a video game. And so we can go anywhere in the model. If you have a question, or if council or the commissioners have a question, we can go there, drive virtually through the area and answer any questions you might have.
Good job, Brandy. I gotta...
Yeah, thank you very much, Fitzpatrick. That's awesome. And a couple of things that I stress throughout our meetings that we've had so far is, I wanted the end towards the courthouse to really be, it's the justice system, and I want it to be majestic. And it's, we're kind of calling that interior area kind of a park area, but it's, it's not the same kind of park as Bergfeld, or the same kind of park as others. And so I really appreciate everybody working with me, and I feel like the court, I can't speak for them, but I feel like they'll, they'll feel the same way, that that needs to be, needs to be that way. And then another thing that was important to me was all during this process, and as we talked about the bond, we talked about the people, the tenants down here on the square, and we didn't want to interrupt them. And it's going to be challenging because we've got some people, and the people we really owe the credit, I believe, to the downtown area were those anchor restaurants that have hung in there throughout all these years of tough times and wanting this downtown to thrive. And other people jumped in and have done that. So I love the idea. One little thing that I really like is we've got some tables and chairs out there, but all along the sides and the sidewalks, we have those seating walls. So there's tons of room so that these, you can run in to one of your favorite restaurants, take your food out, sit on a pretty day, and underneath one of the shade trees on those walls. And I just think it's really special. We, I feel like we owe that piece to those folks that have hung in here all this time in downtown Tyler.
Absolutely.
You know, and one of the plans and design of this is to create walkability and create connectivity and to create safety. And when people talk about crossing Broadway, they say we're taking our lives in our hands crossing Broadway. And so this plan takes safety into consideration to where people can move around the square and go from one side of the square to the other in a safe manner. So it is about family, it's about friends, it's about the restaurants, it's about being together and sitting in the park, but having a slower pace. You know, one thing we've noticed since we quit using the red light, green light on the square and having the blinking red lights is, when someone wants to cross the street, people actually wave them across the street. And people are actually kinder to people when things move a little slower. So we love what we've come up with here. You know, people say, so how are you going to pay for this? You know, and this is not in my talking points, but I'm going to go ahead and say it, is that, you know, you got the, you got the east side and you have the west side. And when you talk about the bond package and you think about the east side of the square by the courthouse, that's going to be on the, on the county. And when you think of the west side, or what we call the future city side with the park and in the eating area, that's on the city. So, you know, there's going to be a maintenance deal that we have to work out. As a matter of fact, there's going to be a number of things that we have to work out, and we can...
And we'll talk about that on Agenda Item Two.
Okay, okay. Let me let him read Agenda Item Two.
Well, I think, I think we still need to talk a little bit more just on these overhead, and then we'll get into that, if you don't mind. One of the things that I wanted to point out, too, is we have concerts and activities, all kinds of events down here. And so one of the things about the roundabout that creates is an area that a stage can be set up if we block Broadway, that potentially we may not have to block all the stuff around the square. So you still may have traffic to be driving around the square, at least in my mind's eye, what we've seen, is that may be a possibility. And if, and I can't really point it out, Brandy, but that one just, that's at Irwin, the roundabout at Irwin and Broadway. If that's where the stage is set up, then even over here where the bathrooms with the view that we have now, if you're sitting on that slope, that's your view to the stage when we have a big concert or any kind of activity. It's really going to be incredible. And then the other little, the little tulip things, whatever they're called, the shade, they can actually be drawn.
Folded up?
You can, yeah, folded up and down. So just a lot of flexibility in this area, and it's really, really exciting.
They can be lit at night, and they look very much like a rose, or, you know, they're, they're used in the Sundance Square in Fort Worth. And so we, we've seen them work and have some research on those. But yes, Judge, to kind of tag to what you're saying, you know, the stage could be set up, and we could set it up on this side of the roundabout where people, traffic can go all the way around the square, even during a festival, if we decide to and not block, you know, not make traffic stop completely. So that's part of the design. Correct.
And I did want to chime in on what Don said a minute ago. Thank you for letting the jurors walk by in front of you across there, since we changed the area where they parked. And thank you, City of Tyler, for allowing us to do that.
You know, and one thing I want to point out, for people that, a little bit about history, you'll see right there in the very center of the screen, there's a statue. And you think, what is that? That is Shorty the Squirrel. And for those of you that are from here, you realize that Shorty the Squirrel was a fixture in downtown in the, from the 1950s to the early 1960s. And there's the tree on the square now where there actually is a monument where Shorty has been buried. So we are trying to preserve Shorty the Squirrel for any of you that are curious about what that statue is.
And there will probably be further discussion on it.
Yeah.
All right. So I think that probably, does anybody have any questions just about what the layout or any comments y'all would like to say on either side, council or commissioners?
The roundabouts, is there a, I mean, was there traffic study or reason that this was done roundabouts versus just driving through instead of circling? What's the purpose of the roundabouts or?
Well, Kimberly Horn did the study, and they recommended the roundabouts so you have continuous traffic. And when you take, when you take the four lanes down to two lanes, you got to keep the traffic moving.
So there's no stopping or stop red lights?
No.
Oh, okay.
So, so as you go around the roundabout, the traffic's going to continue to flow.
That makes sense.
And, because with two lanes, if you have stop signs, people are going to be backed up forever.
I understand.
And one other point to be made on the traffic study was the parking is now, it's slant, it's diagonal pull-in and back-out parking, just like, I know early talks were about some different kind of parking. And there was a little, I guess, issues.
Pushback.
Yeah, pushback, a little pushback.
Mayor and Judge, I will, since we're on streets, I'll mention the brick streets. We looked at a lot of designs throughout the nation that have brick streets, but here, Tyler's special, and we wanted the brick streets to be the star and to really show off that heritage and the history that we have with those and just the nostalgia that's there. And so the brick streets are kind of the only place where we're primarily using brick so that they can stand out and be set apart from the rest of the design. I think that's an important piece to the design.
The original brick, correct.
The original brick. Yes, sir.
Any other comments from council or court members?
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say with the, how essential the building blocks of family is, and to see all of the family that's out there and how families can come together and really enjoy the downtown, it's just really beautiful to me.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Okay, that would bring us to Agenda Item Number Two, a joint discussion by Tyler City Council and Smith County Commissioners Court regarding outline for next steps and further action required by each entity on the final design for public spaces in downtown Tyler. And I'll turn it over to Mayor Warren to start.
Well, there are going to be a number of things to discuss in the future. And when we talk in a minute about taking a vote, it's a, it's a vote about a concept. So, you know, there's a lot of things that have not been ironed out. And a couple of those are Spring Street. Yeah, I think there's some, some needs by the county to have a certain amount of space in front of the courthouse for safety. And so that would require the city to have a partial street closure on Spring. And, which would be for pedestrian traffic only at that point. And so you say, so what happens to the traffic that usually goes around the square? Well, that traffic would all of a sudden go behind the courthouse over to Fannin. And so how will Fannin be designed to handle the traffic going, that would normally go down Spring, would go behind the courthouse and wrap around the courthouse? So there's things that are going to have to be ironed out to, to really define how this exactly is going to work. You know, we talk about programming and for the downtown public space. You know, this gets a little complicated, and this is one where, you know, now when someone applies for, and I'm not sure if I'm going to say this right, but a permit?
Reserve, just a reserve, a reservation.
A reservation for, for the square. Is the county going to continue to do that? Is the city going to do that? That has not been ironed out. You know, is Shorty the Squirrel going to be in the square? That has to be ironed out evidently. But there's, there are going to be some things that, that we have to have continued discussions about. And that's one of the things that's so good about having this positive relationship is that we can come up with some conclusion. We're going to have to have some compromise, but there's going to be a lot of things left to talk about.
And I, yeah, I want to jump in here and address Fannin Street. And we may, we may, if we can get back to the page that we go around to Fannin Street. Spring Street, we love it the way this is drawn up right now where it is just pedestrian traffic. It is available in case we have an emergency, emergency vehicles, it's going to be built like a road, it'll be where you can, you can drive on it in case we need that. But what, for... But for, for safety, we need to move that out as well. And then, but Fannin Street, when you get around there, it won't be the Fannin Street you see today. It'll be different. And as you see, we have trees planted beside the track, looks like they're growing into the track right now. And then you see in the background, the waterfront, which is amazing. But, but right here, if, if you see, you run down Fannin Street, it drives almost directly into the parking garage. So it really will be a track that most people are taking anyway. So they'll be driving around the square, driving in the parking garage, then an easy walk to anywhere they want to go on, on the square. Just wanted to point that out. And this is a beautiful side too. Every side of the courthouse is wonderful.
So in one of the things, one of the things that, that people are going to want to know, who's going to take care of this? Who's going to do the maintenance? Who's going to, sorry, I didn't mean to look at you, Terry. But who's going to pay for all this? And so what I'd like, if Ed can come down and explain the TERS that we have in place for making improvements downtown to infrastructure and this will kind of play into how we'll, we'll pay for maintenance or possibly pay for maintenance.
And I just want to thank you, Mr. Bursard, for volunteering to pay for that maintenance today. So thank you.
Well, yeah. Thank you, Mayor and Judge. So one of the things, this will be actually a step that will be brought to, oh, there we go, thank you, Thomas, that will be brought to the counsel and commissioners court and actually Tyler Junior College relatively soon, is reworking the tax increment reinvestment zone or TERS that sits on top of downtown that the city, the county and Tyler Junior College already participate in. One of the comments and questions has been in relationship to the maintenance of the square and public safety, which were not two things that we originally wrote into the TERS when it was put together back, I guess probably about now, about six years ago when we reworked it. And so what we're looking at is the redoing the TERS in order to include those components. And also looking at as far as the county's and TJC's participation amounts for the, for the time there. There was a declining rate structure that was originally, that was part of this. And so what we're looking at now is we're including the maintenance and the public safety components. What can we do to have that to be at a longer timeframe to match with the city had and also percentage wise to match with the city had? And that'd be for both for Smith County and for Tyler Junior College as well. And that then provides a funding stream that goes into maintenance of the square proper as you're seeing it here. And also, like I said, one of the things that we've looked at and want to make sure is what can we do to allocate public safety for downtown that this would also fund towards? And that will be coming, we look to see that coming possibly to your commissioners court meeting in late October, October 24th, I think is the date that we're currently working with.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Warren?
Does anybody, I mean, there's a lot of things, further action steps that, that are going to occur. One thing that we didn't really cover, or maybe we didn't, I wasn't listening, but the, the, can you come back up and just talk about the timeline of, of when?
Absolutely. So important, important milestones we'll kind of go over. I don't know, Hector, could you pull up, this is a clip of a timeline we're working on now. And some of these things, this is courthouse timeline. And so I think this would help us kind of know an outlook since the bond is underway and, and we're working on that project. We're in general terms, we're working on the parking structure first and it's phase one of the bond project. It's underway, planning, construction drawings have gone out, it's bidding, and we plan to start it in, in October. So next, that's already next month and about two weeks. So we are, that project will be underway and we plan for that phase, what we call phase one, to be complete, you know, in about a year. So August, September of next year, the parking structure should be complete. That's 550 new parking spaces in downtown ready to go in about a year from now. What's great about that is then phase two begins, which is the courthouse itself, will, will be starting that process probably, you know, there's, there's some demolition that has to occur on the site and some site prep and make ready. That will happen probably about a year from now. And we'll begin that process. That's a two-year construction project schedule. So if you think about it in terms of years, from next September, October, it'll be September, October of '26, when, when the courthouse looks to be complete. Then we plan to move everyone and transition from the existing courthouse into the new courthouse. That process will happen along with some demolition planned for the existing courthouse and park improvements on the east side, what, what the mayor was talking about. That all goes with the bond.
Yeah, and that, that was a point I was going to bring up. He mentioned about the money on their end. Our, our, I mean, it's all our property, the county's property, but on the east end there, it's covered in the bond, that we plan the money for that restoration.
Correct. Not the streets, but the, the, inside the property line of that park area, green space area. So when we're thinking about the project in general, when you think of downtown, what we've, what we've considered and looked at as far as construction drawings for, let's say, the west side of the square, Mayor, and then the street improvements that we're working with half on, that we think we would also begin drawing with the council's approval. We could begin also in October, drawing that project. And we think that's probably a nine-month, I believe we said, nine-month to 12-month project as far as construction drawings go and all the engineering that needs to take place. So what that means is that we think we would potentially be ready to start the park project on the west side for the city about the same time the courthouse begins, phase two of the courthouse, so in about a year from now. We think that's a good projected schedule in that it, in lack of a better terms, it kind of rips the Band-Aid off and we are able to take care of both sides of the square at the same time and not drag out a construction project, you know, indefinitely for the, the voters and the constituents and, and for those using downtown, mainly for the, those restaurants and retailers who are here in downtown. We're, we're planning to be extremely sensitive to, to them, communicate early, let them know how this phasing could happen and provide early communication about parking and getting their customers and individuals into the businesses while these construction projects happen. For instance, the parking structure being complete. Having that 550 extra cars downtown within a block away from these businesses is vital. We also have ideas in place for while the street improvements on the west side are happening and we're not working on the green space, there is potential for even creating parking area directly on that square proper for individuals to be able to get into businesses on that, like Culture, Andy's, 1948. So we've got a lot of ideas in place for making this as painless as possible and in a timeline that is congruent and parallel. That would mean that the west side of the park would be complete earlier than the courthouse, but we would have to wait a little while and wait until the, you know, the completion of the phase two and phase three of the projects, we think, before we can work on the streets on the east side, if that makes sense. Any questions? That's, that's as condensed as I can make that, but I know it's a little, it's a lot of information.
Comments or questions from anyone? All right.
Thanks, Brandy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I guess that brings us to Agenda Item Three, request that both the city Tyler Council and the Smith County Commissioners Court each consider possible action and vote to accept a concept design as presented by Fitzpatrick Architects for one, for the public spaces in downtown Tyler, Texas. So I guess.
Let me go first?
You can.
All right. I will entertain a motion from the council to accept a concept design as presented by Fitzpatrick Architects for the public spaces in downtown Tyler, Texas. Who is the second? Got a motion by Haney, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. I would entertain a motion to accept a concept design as presented by Fitzpatrick Architects for the public spaces in downtown Tyler, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Frederick, second by Commissioner Caraway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do you have any closing remarks, Mayor? About Shorty the Squirrel?
No, I, I don't have any, any comments about Shorty the Squirrel. But I will say, you know, the music helps. And, and seriously, you know, when you, when you watch the video, and I don't know what it is about the music in the video, but it, it's almost emotional. And because this is something that we've worked on for years. And this is something we've worked on with, with EMA and Mark and Fitzpatrick and the county. And it, it's a, it's a big deal. And when you see what that whole concept is of downtown and what it means for the city of Tyler and what it means to, to the people that live here, and it's, it's just, to me, it's, it's thrilling. So I really, I want to thank everybody that's been involved in the project. I want to thank the, the county commissioners for their support and I look forward to working with you in the future on this.
Yes, and that's what I'd like to follow up as well is thank you to the council, Mayor, and all your staff, just been wonderful, Fitzpatrick and all our construction companies, everybody who's involved. It's, it's really exciting. I mentioned it's, it's a wonderful time to be in Smith County and the city of Tyler. And I mean it because it's collaboration like this. It's us all working together and us all thinking in the same direction that's exciting. And we'll work out all the little hiccups, I know for a fact. Mayor Warren, I almost called you Don again. Mayor Warren and I get along very well and we work together well and that's how you get progress. It's kind of a give and take and we'll, we will make that happen and we're looking forward to the growth and just really excited about this. So this has been a successful meeting. With that, I would like to say that y'all have a blessed week. Feel free to come back Tuesday at 9:30 for our commissioners court meeting if you just don't have anything to do. And we are adjourned. Y'all have a blessed week.